All the November 21st meeting of the Person Board of County Commissioners to order this time, recognize that we do have a quorum. I will ask Commissioner Sims to lead us in an invocation, after which Commissioner PJ Gentry will lead our Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. The only five is thank you for allowing us to be here today. We just asked that you would lead us and guide us as we go forth in our meetings today and help us to make wise decisions. We ask and pray that you be with our EMS, Fire, Police, Sheriff's Departments, and all those that are, every day they go out and risk their lives to keep us safe. We pray for our military, pray that you will be with them and be with their families, especially during this time of Thanksgiving, those who are not here and overseas. And again, being that we are celebrating Thanksgiving, let us all be thankful for the many blessings that you have blessed us with. We pray these things in your most heavenly name. Amen.
Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on our agenda is discussion adjustment and approval of the agenda as presented. And I would request that item number three on the agenda be postponed to a future meeting due to the presenter not being able to be with us today. Any other discussion or adjustment to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda with the removal of item number three.
We have a motion on the floor. All in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carried. Next on our agenda is informal comments, where we have 10 minutes set aside at each Commissioner meeting for public comment. I think we have three speakers and we'll have approximately three and a half minutes for discussion by each. Please be aware, cognizant of the time and courtesy to the speakers to follow. And let me remind you that your comments are to the entire board, not individual board members. Madam Clerk, who is our first speaker?
Mr. John C. of Northport, Florida.
Good morning.
Every once in a while, there's a shining example given by God to a community, and Commissioner Gentry has been just such a shining example of a good, strong, Christian leader within Person County. Her goodness and thoughtfulness is known, not just throughout our county, but throughout our state. From the day she took her solemn oath of office, she conducted herself in sincere service to the community, not herself. Her selfless approach to the office of Commissioner was exemplary by being transparent in her conduct on the board, asking questions and gathering information publicly, never voting for something till she understood it and could determine what was best for the citizens of Person County. She's been humble and kind, listening and responding to all who interacted with her. Compassion was the order of the day, as she held firm to the standards of conduct and her Christian convictions. Commissioner Gentry's steady diligence and honest approach to the role was a breath of fresh air, showing all who are willing to see that everyday moral decisions matter and have consequences. Her confidence, her focus, her hope for a better tomorrow and awareness displayed a quiet Christian strength seldom seen. Her behavior reflects well on her family, her heart, and her church. I am sure God has a blessing for her for a job well done in service to this community. May she be successful in the Lord's eyes with whatever she places her hand to next. I will personally miss her presence on this board and feel that without her, the board and county will struggle more than it has already. You know I meant it when I said, "You are this county's Joan of Arc," which is the title of this speech, if you will. Many times, we have observed how she has maintained her composure and proper demeanor while being scorned by others and treated contentably by some who took the same oath of office as she did. You never let the demeaning abuse quench the light you protected and upheld for those you served. Thank you for your service as you move to your next task in life. While some may believe that election results are the end-all, we know that it is just the beginning as a Commissioner. You understand that the ends don't justify the means, as today we watch the world that does whatever's right in their own eyes. Thank you for showing that character matters and that leadership matters. You have been such a blessing to the citizens of Person County, whether each citizen realizes it or not, and I wish there were 100 people behind me throughout this county saying similar things. I'm sure that God above is looking down today and saying, "Good job, my good and faithful servant." God bless you always, Commissioner Gentry. It has been and is an honor to know you. Sincerely, me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker is Sheriff Dewey Jones.
I just want to give you an update, and I wanted to publicly thank our county manager and HR, Signa and her team. I come before this board about the problem we were having in the detention center. This is something we've been working on for months, and they actually found a way to actually help us out already. And I am pleased to say we were 15 down in the jail. We're only down nine now, and because of the work that's been done here, we have three of our ones that left are in the process of coming back, and two more are already in the works to hire. So, within a matter of two to three weeks, what we've been able to turn around in the jail, we went 15 down, and hopefully within a week, we'll only be four down. So, I want to say thank you for the work that was done, and it was very much appreciated by all. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate it.
And our last speaker is Ms. Cynthia Lynch of Hermes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
To what John said, I'll say ditto, but I'll also have to add a little bit more. What I really appreciate about Commissioner Gentry is her willingness to ask questions. I think that is so important. I've noticed on other boards that I've been involved with, meetings I've observed, that people tend not to ask questions here. I don't know if they think that's a sign of not understanding, but questions are really important. It also helps the public to understand what's going on. Sometimes, I ask questions just to clarify things. I may even know the answer, but I've been on boards where I ask questions just to get something on the record. Questions are so helpful, and Commissioner Gentry has been so good at asking those questions, making sure there's clarification, making sure we understand. So, I would just ask that you would all take that on and ask questions and help us to all understand what's going on here. I appreciate so much that, when it came to economic development, when it came to how we can help our citizens, particularly those with DSS and those kind of issues, that she really took the time to look into it, took extra time to put together people who could help her understand what were the best ways, and I think she came up with some really good answers. Maybe not quite the time for some of those things, but please don't put those on the back burner. There is a lot of information, there is a lot of just wisdom that I think has come out of how we can approach things, how we can approach things differently, look outside of the box. There's a lot of challenges that you're going to have in the future, so please, ask those questions, look at things diligently, and work out of the box. Sometimes, those are where you're going to find your best answers. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was our last speaker. I was approached after the sign-up for another speaker's up to the board if you'd like to allow any further public comments.
Yeah, we'll accept that. It's time limit, because we have had one item removed, so...
Yeah, absolutely. So, come forward, please.
And thank you to the board for that. I really appreciate it. Anderson Clayton, just here to say that I know that y'all are going over the American Rescue Plan dollar funding opportunities later, and we wanted to voice support once again for putting money towards a splash pad here in the community. And a lot of people in the community wanted to be here today for that. Unfortunately, work does not permit them to leave at 9:00 AM and come to one of these meetings, so I'm hopeful that y'all will take me as their representative today, but please make sure that y'all are thinking about that when you do take the opportunity to look over those options later. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you. Item number one on the agenda is discussion adjustment approval of the consent agenda as presented. Do you have a motion for approval?
Yeah, I just have one comment. There's a lot of funds moving around. Is this just the end-of-the-year balancing for a lot of this? I know, I'm the question-asker, I know.
I didn't even grab a copy before I came down.
Oh.
But I think one of the budget amendments includes a transfer from the general fund to the capital investment fund for, I think it was over $4 million, maybe? And that is to comply with the policy that we all have in place now to move any excess fund balance reserves over the 25% that was recognized to the CIF fund to help support debt and capital.
For debt service and capital approvals. That's why I just wanted to clarify that. There's like, you know, there's a total of $88,500,000.
Well, it's actually, that's actually just the transfers that's causing that to look like it doubles. It's really just $4 million.
Journal adjustments back and forth.
Yes.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate that. Thanks.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carried. Item number two on the new business, presentation of the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Ms. Weinberg, again. Thank you.
Good morning. I am pleased to introduce Alan Thompson. He is our auditor from, let me see if I've got this right, Thompson, Troy, Scott, and He is here to present our fiscal year '22 audit report.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
You should have at your place have a copy of the audit report, but I'm going to jump from this smaller report, and hopefully I've got most of the numbers you'd like to look at in there, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. First thing, if I can, the main thing you do hire us to do is to issue an opinion on the financial statements as a whole. We issue unmodified reports, which is a quote-unquote clean report. And on page one, I'm going to start there. I'm going to read some highlights. I will get to the two or three findings I want to discuss, and then I'll talk about numbers. No significant audit findings. On page two, no difficulties in performing the audit, no uncorrected misstatements, no disagreements with management. Management did provide us with a representation letter dated October 21st. We're unaware that management can solve any outside accountants, solitaires, et cetera. Under findings or issues, two, if you'll allow me the patience to get to very last on financials, and then on the Medicaid, all were technical and no, none had to do with determination, so there was no money involved whatsoever. On page four, if you will, I don't attempt to say these are all the key numbers in the audit report, but they are some of the key numbers in the audit report. And the hope here is that by pulling these numbers out, putting them in a spreadsheet with the four prior years, you get a feel for what the trends might be, and it gives you a better context of what might actually, what fund balance might be, rather than just a number sitting out there in isolation. So, you can see total fund balance in general fund at $33,991,489. It's the highest of any of the five years. Unavailable fund balance, $9,590. Committed and assigned at $3.2 million. General fund expenditures at $67,328,831. And then fund balance available as a percentage at 36.24. Unassigned fund balance at $21,108. And then unassigned fund balance as a percentage at 31.35. Revenues over and under expenses before transfers. The general fund was $10,968,987, and the stormwater fund at $72,414. Total cash in the general fund, $27,707. Again, that's the highest of any of the five years there. And then other governmental, the cash is $36,865. And that's higher than normal because of the status of certain projects, i.e. ARPA money, unspent at the end of the year, airport project, et cetera, money sitting there at the end of the year. So, it's not, it's a timing issue rather than, hey, we got all this money sitting there. So, it's really, it's going to be spent, obviously y'all determined that, but that jump from 15 to 36, there is a reason for that, as mentioned, the timing. Stormwater cash, $773,590. Again, that's the highest of any of the years presented. Then you see the general fund again and fund balance, fund balance, other governmental funds at $16,151, and then stormwater at $7,45696. You see your property tax rates there, and then collection percentages, 98.62. You see a strong collection percentage across the board on the five years, total property valuation, total levy amount. And then a breakdown of your general fund revenues and expenditures by department. I'm not going to read all those numbers out for you. If you'd be kind enough to flip over to page five, you can see a nice little trend there in the blue in terms of total fund balance, and then the committed and assigned in red. I will say this about my group weighted average on the bottom, and I apologize for it. I don't have a good, I don't make the determination, so I'm just relaying information. Traditionally, it's been a real good determination and just getting a feel for where you make stack up versus other counties in your population. The LGC slash State Treasurer decided that they were going to do away with that, i.e. blocks of 10 on population and just make it, everybody with a budget under $100 million and everybody with a budget over $100 million. So, the value of that group-weighted average comparison kind of went way down. So, but it's still there. So, you can see that on the bottom, your percentage versus the group-weighted average. On page six, you can see unassigned fund balance as a percentage charted out. I will say this, this unassigned fund balance does have some bearing. It's one of the numbers they look at if you ever go out for debt at the LGC, the debt committee, et cetera. There was some talk, all us old farts who've been doing this for 30-some years, thought it's always been 8.33 according to General Statute 159, and the LGC put a memo out and said, "No, that's not true." But 8.33%, basically is one month expenditures. So, what they actually do is determine what it should be on a per-unit basis. I would say and encourage, if you get close to 8.33, you'll probably get a little call, a little visit, somebody will be saying, "Why is it that close?" So, yours is strong. The larger unit you are in terms of total expenditures in general fund, probably the smaller that can be, i.e., if I did a Beach Town audit, if they had 30%, I'd be going nuts. It's too low. But it's your level, where you are is good and it's strong. On the bottom, you can see analysis revenues over and under expenses before transfers, and you can see positive across the board for both general fund and stormwater fund. And on page seven, you can see your cash balances and fund balances in a pie chart at the top with the numbers right underneath that. And again, take the other governmental funds, cash with a grain of salt, because it's a timing of when the airport project or ARPA monies are spent and not necessarily, hey, we've got this big amount of money stored up to do something with. On page eight, you can see your property tax rates compared to the group-weighted average and the collection percentage on the bottom compared to the group-weighted average. And then on page nine, you can see your general fund revenue as a percentage with avalor and taxes being approximately 55%, and the large general fund expenditures being public safety, human services, education, and general government. Last year, June 30, on page 10, last year, June 30, 21, the LGC, if you ever had a finding or they wanted a response, they sent you what was called a unit letter. They no longer send unit letters. They ask us to tell you what they want you to respond to them about within 60 days from today. And what they want is two responses. One's a budget violation. There's a big number there. I'll come back and talk about it, and it's only $15,00949. It's the timing on when some fines and forfeitures were in there and the budget wasn't made for it. The other is a prior period adjustment where the LGC wants you to include a third month after the end of the year for sales tax revenue. So, really, it just added to fund balance, if you will. So, instead of two, we accrued three. That large amount, you don't even have to apply for because it's an accounting standard. So, the leases, GASB 87, where any lease that the county has with someone or to someone has to be recorded on the balance sheet and on the income statement or fund balances. I'm not sure how much meaning it has, but you have to budget for it. And last year, meaning 6/30/22, there was some discussion at the LGC level that we're not even going to make you call it a finding, and then after the end of the year, they said, "Oh, yes, we are." So, you can take all that 87 with a grain of salt, which is why they said, "We don't want you to respond to it." Because if, whatever, y'all can figure all that out. The truth about...
Is it or isn't it? Is it or isn't it?
Well, it does, in their mind, have value. In my mind, it doesn't have a lot of value, because if you've got a 20-year lease on a building, you know you've got an annual expenditure of 20 years. What they're trying to do is accumulate the payments for those 20 years and bring it back to a present value and put that asset on the building, on the balance sheet, and that liability on the balance sheet, how much value that has, and then come over and put a revenue and expenditure on your budget actual. So, if you figure that one out, you...
Why would they do that? Doesn't it make any sense?
No, ma'am, it does.
Okay.
So, that's why I'm saying, what you really have on the findings is, we added a month of sales tax, and there was $15,000 on the budget for fines and forfeitures. Other than that, again, unmodified report, which is a quote-unquote clean report, overall financially is good shape. Saw where your fund balance, highest of any of the five years, cash is the highest of any of the five years in general fund, and you've got some project timing on some things, on cash, on other governmentals. I'm happy to answer any questions you got of me, and I'm also happy to answer any questions. If you take it home and you can't sleep one night and you read through the whole audit report, don't call me that night, but the next morning, give me a call, and if I happen not to be there, tell them to give you my cell number, I'll do my best to get you an answer.
Sir, could you explain a little bit more about fines and forfeitures, that $15,000?
I'm probably going to let Amy have a shot at that one.
Okay. I don't know, just for clarity. I mean, I know what it is and where it goes, but...
So, initially, fines up till now, up till the fiscal year '22 report, fines and forfeitures, it was, is an in-and-out. It is an in-and-out account. We collect fines and forfeitures. It comes from the courts. We then turn around and submit that amount to the Board of Education. So, up till recently, we only had to report this on the balance sheet, and so all those transactions were going into that account and then back out of that account. So, you didn't really have to budget for that, because that's a balance sheet account. Well, this new standard requires now that this, these monies be recognized with a budget for revenues and a budget for the expenditure going out. Well, somewhere along the way, the standard also included a lot of other things. We addressed all of the other things and forgot to go back and take that account and classify it as a revenue and expenditure account. Because of that, we had to, when the adjustment was made, to split that account out and recognize it as a revenue and recognize the expenditure for the audit report, that expenditure was placed in the education, in the schools department, in the education function. Well, as you know, we don't have but two departments in the education function. We have the schools and we have PCC. So, there wasn't a lot of money in those two departments to support with budget the amount that we had to post there as an expenditure for the fines and forfeitures. And therefore, it caused that over-budget issue in the report. And so, because we're over-budget in the education function, it caused the finding to be in place. So, now, we have, of course, addressed that for the fiscal year '23 report. We'll have budget there to cover that revenue and the expenditure, so it won't be a problem. But because it was a last-minute adjustment, we can't go back and appropriate funds to put in the budget to cover it.
Can't go back and post date the adjustment?
You can't, you can't, right.
The journal adjustment.
It's unfortunate, it's kind of unfair. You can go back and make adjustments to expenditures and add, you know, to them, but you can't do anything about the budget once the year closes. So...
We will thank the sheriff and the courts for the fines and forfeitures, but now you have to budget, so will that be an estimated figure or how do you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll have to estimate, that'll be part of the adopted budget. We'll have that fines and forfeitures line in the schools department to cover that expenditure going to them.
It sounds like another national, one-size-fits-all financial standard that really makes no sense for North Carolina, where our state constitution absolutely says that that money just has to, when it's received, be paid out to the school board.
Exactly, yeah.
So, is anybody working on killing this process? I mean, is there any lobbying people going, "This is really..."
Well, I can tell you...
Are you, is it not necessary?
Yeah, I can tell you that this one is less of an issue than the lease implementation that Alan was talking about. That is a problem across the board for every unit of government that we have in North Carolina. It is a cumbersome process that we are having to, we are going to have to hire or contract with a third party to just do the calculations for us necessary to do that, to do that calculation every year for the audit report.
So, it's costing us more money to do this?
Yes, yes. It has no, there's no rhyme or reason to it. Nobody reading the audit report is going to understand the significance, there really is no significance to what they're doing with that. They're taking an operating lease and classifying it as a capital lease. So, it's crazy, but it is what the Government Finance Officers Association has handed down, which is a national association, and it is what we have to comply with. So, I think that is why the state has said, "Don't worry about sending us a letter, you know, about that issue if you didn't comply completely with that, because it is so complicated, and most units are really struggling with that report."
I would think the State County Commissioners Association would be on this kind of thing. It's affecting everybody.
I hope so. It's been a very, of course, it's been great for these third-party companies that want you to pay them to help do these calculations, but we just, very few units have the capacity to be able to do those calculations, and you have to have special software to, you know, to really figure that out.
Somebody's lobbying for it in Raleigh.
Sure, yeah.
And other places.
Right, yeah. So, anyway, it is a national thing. It's not just for North Carolina. This is a national standard that we had to comply with.
Just one more quick word. There's a long history of this, the Government Accounting Standards Board. It is not a particularly transparent board. They don't really listen to comments. It is fair to say that the standards they impose are well-meaning, and often there is good reason for the requirements, but they do tend to be one-size-fits-all that some... sometimes is very difficult and costly to comply with. But once they put one in place, I don't know, but instance where one has ever been completely revealed.
No, it's there. It's there. We will have to deal with that going forward, I'm sure.
That's a little authoritarian, isn't it?
Yes, I think so too.
I mean, seriously, that, that kind of goes against the whole principle of, of our constitution and, and how we govern. That just is really difficult.
It is, and those accounting standards, when they come down, are not always the easiest to implement. And this one was, this one was tough.
Wow.
So it is here to stay, I think, and we will just have to deal with it the best we can.
Okay, Amy, you and staff and our auditors, we appreciate your efforts for handling taxpayers' money wisely and openly and very transparent and well-explained, and appreciate your efforts there.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I have a, I have one quick question for you. The weighted average here on property taxes, you, there's, it looks like our property taxes are so much higher compared to the weighted average of the hundred million dollars or less budgets. But our taxes incorporate, I think, we've got things in our taxes that are incorporating fire taxes and whatnot that aren't maybe in the weighted. Is that, is that a fair number to look at?
I don't think so.
Okay.
And I'm attempting to explain because, you know, the one-size-fits-all comment on the eighty-seven, the group-weighted average, if you don't have similar populations in it, I mean, we're gonna probably sit down as partners and decide whether or not we want to include it going forward because I think it, if you can't get similar-sized population counties, it tends to distort it.
Yeah, but, but, but my point was, there are different counties, like they'll have a property tax and then they'll have a fire tax and everything else, and they're separated out. So this could be representative just strictly property taxes where our tax rate includes those things. It's a lump sum. So ours is different. It makes ours look higher overall.
Yes, ma'am.
But if you were to break some of that out, it would look differently. And I think, when I looked at that, I went, that doesn't look right to me. So just getting rid of it, just getting rid of it altogether would, I don't know if it'd be helpful, but.
The only other option we would have to get you a good comparison would probably be two, two things, because we don't tend to audit Wake County, Mecklenburg.
Right.
Is to try and get a, a group of ten counties of similar-sized population, and in this case, pull out specific items that would distort the comparison.
Yeah.
I, if XYZ County doesn't have the fire tax included, then we pull yours out to get a better comparison.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, if you all have, are satisfied with the report and have had your questions answered to your satisfaction, the traditional motion is to accept the report of the independent auditor for the record.
We have a motion.
Motion to accept a report of the independent auditor.
I have a motion on the floor of acceptance as presented. All in favor, well, comments, further comments or questions? Discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No motion carried.
Thank you, Amy and staff. I know this is hard, I know this is hard work.
Moving along on the agenda to item number two would be the County Farm Park Project. Great opportunities, or rather, grant opportunities, introduction of Piedmont Conservation Council Incorporated, Mr. John Hill.
Morning.
How are y'all doing this morning?
Good.
Good. I'd like to introduce you to Janelle Rogers. Janelle is our partner with Piedmont Conservation Council. And as you know, this exciting project that we're working on, we've been working on for a while, it seems like, the County Farm Park. The interim alternative implementation approach to stormwater includes the County Farm Park, or excuse me, the County Farm, which is not a park yet, and the Rock Athletic Complex. So we have some grant opportunities coming up, as we mentioned, when this process first started, where we can take the actual stormwater money and match it with Land Water Conservation Trust Fund and Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grant to double down on our money. Just recently, we've been working with the Piedmont Conservation Council on some other grant opportunities, and I am just gonna let Janelle take the stage and talk about what Piedmont Conservation Council is all about.
So good morning. It's nice to be able to meet you all. On behalf of the PCC Board, again, my name is Janelle Rogers. I'm the executive director there. We manage projects on behalf of the soil and district waters in ten of our counties. Piedmont Conservation is one of them. And working with Mr. Hill, we've been able to identify the environmental enhancement grant through the state of North Carolina to help focus on the grant for the county park. And so with Piedmont, Piedmont Conservation Council, I work with two other staff that helped to identify these projects, and then I write the grants for them. So on behalf of that, we are really excited to be able to partner with you in conservation efforts that we focus on with North Carolina.
Fine.
Yes. And we have been doing so for quite a while. So I'm not sure, John, if there's any other questions or any other statements.
And as you know, we pay into, we pay a membership, along with other counties and municipalities, into the Piedmont Conservation Council, and of course, they provide all these great services of, you know, administering grants, applying for them, and also project management. One recent grant that Piedmont, PCC worked on with us, if you remember, was the Wildlife Grant where we, where we studied the species along the railroad corridor from Roxboro all the way to Timberlake. And that was back in two thousand and nineteen.
Eighteen, nineteen.
Roughly. So, and what that grant did for us is by studying the, the ecosystem along the Flat River, it, it created us an environmental review that we can utilize for our other grant processes and other grant applications. And this particular effort here, so just to give you a ballpark of, and of course, y'all know grants are not a guarantee, but we do have a pretty good track record of, of acquiring grants. So the plan for the farm park, for the farm to become park, is to take the remaining balance of our stormwater funds that we have not spent to date and combine that with a possible environmental enhancement grant, once we do receive that grant, which will be probably in the three-hundred-thousand-dollar range once everything is combined. So then, what we would do is we would take, excuse me, around the four-hundred-thousand-dollar mark when everything's combined, we take the four-hundred-thousand dollars, PCC will use that as a match to Land Water Conservation Trust or Parks and Recreation Trust and make double that money, make it an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar project. So it's a good opportunity. We enjoy the partnership.
Okay, so back up, so the, the potential grant's four-hundred thousand, and then the match from Person County's funds is four-hundred thousand for the eight-hundred thousand?
Correct.
Is that kind of what we're hoping that it comes together? Okay.
Yeah. And so what we need from you today is, we would like, we would like for you to motion and adopt your support for the project and the grant application that PCC is going to apply for. And then with your support, what that does for us in our grant packet, there's a certain amount of points you get if the board supports things like the grant application or the project or so on and so forth. And so we're hoping that you still support the project and the, the grant opportunity so that we get those, those points with Parks and Recreation Trust Fund Board.
So then, these, these funds you're talking about are part of what this board had voted to do previously?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Further questions of Mr. Hill? Or Ms. Rogers? I don't wanna leave you out either. Here none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize or approve of the, the process application in joint venture with, with our County Recreation Board. Is that how you wanted to go forward, cooperation?
It would be a, a motion of your support for the project and for the application to Parks and Recreation Trust.
Motion of support of the project and the motion for the application of the project. And also, I'd like to add that future naming of the, of the park, I think, because it's historical value and, and importance to the community, I'd like to throw out that the naming of the park be the Burton Tilly Park. Like to throw that out now for, for potential consideration for the future naming of the park as well.
If you wanna, if you wanna do that, second part, I think that would be a separate motion.
Do I have a separate motion on that? Okay.
Okay, first motion, again, Madam Clerk.
All right. She is, the motion is to reaffirm the partnership with the Person Conservation Council in supporting their submission of the grant psychoapplications on the county's behalf related to the Land and Water Trust Fund grant and/or the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grant for this project, for the County Farm project.
Okay, that's a motion. Any further comments, questions? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carried. Okay, Commissioner Gentry, did you want to do the second?
I'd like to make a motion that we consider naming the, the potential County Farm Park the Burton Tilly Park.
Mr. Chairman, is, is a motion appropriate for just for future consideration? I mean, I think-
Good point.
I think, I mean, I value the, I value the recommendation, but I don't think a motion's needed if we're, if it's gonna be for future consideration of it.
To be considered, well, it's still, it's still a lot to be decided and determined based on your, our previous motion and acceptance, so we're still in the infancy part of that, so.
Right. Just wanna get it, get it on the table, get it on the record that there's, that in dealing, in talking with the people who have owned the land and lived in the area, that naming it after, some, some historical value of, of the family legacies of the ownership of the land and the history in the county, that many of the, the landowners would appreciate the recognition of a park named Burton Tilly. So I'd like to just have that on the record.
Yeah, so noted in the minutes and no further action at this time.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Chairman's report. As we well know, we've just had an election, and we've got two newly elected officials in our audience. Jason Thomas, who'll be on board with us beginning in December, and New Sheriff Jason. Appreciate you both being here. Best wishes in the future and look forward to working with both of you. As far as my reports, I've typical month with RTRP meeting, and I'll mention there that in the Research Triangle meeting, Person County has been highlighted as one of the top-recognized notes through the region over the past quarter, and that's a compliment to us and our staff as being responsive to their request and the information posted on the regional website. JCPC meeting, which was, again, a monthly meeting. And Person Industries had another very good day with lots of activity there with a stew and, and a giveaway of some Hollywood furniture, which I bought tickets to and didn't win, so I don't have to explain anything. It was, it was a donation. And I participated in another well-organized Veterans Day activity that was held in the auditorium here, primarily because of weather. Compliment our veterans again, and that staff and what they do to recognize Person County veterans. They do an outstanding job, one of the best in the state. And I compliment the citizens who put up their green lights in honor of veterans, the week that we'd set aside for that. So anyway, that's my report, and Manager Kathy?
Good morning, everyone. To follow up on Sheriff Jones' report, HR staff did work on a, conducting a market study for our detention staff since we were seeing quite a few vacancies in that area, and did identify some adjustments that could be made with lapsed salary funding in the current budget. So it did not require amending their budget. We were able to go ahead and move forward with implementing those changes, so we are glad that we could work with them on that. It likely gets a bit of a head start on the, the total classification and pay study that we're doing countywide. Those would likely be changes that would have been recommended through that. And as far as the study goes, we will have employee meetings being held next Monday, so we are in the midst of the study, working with our consultants to move that forward over the next few months. So we'll have our results in advance of the budget process.
May I ask you a question, Manager Kathy? You mentioned lapsed salary. We know what that is.
Sure.
And we know the flexibility they have, but would you address that a little bit, please?
Sure, so those are, are salary savings. It's money that we had budgeted in this current fiscal year, but due to the turnover that they've had within the department, it was money that has not been spent over the first quarter of the fiscal year, first three or four months. So that money that was still within the budget over that timeframe was enough to cover the adjustments for the remainder of the fiscal year, even if they were fully staffed through the end of the year.
And that's budgeted money, which requires no action on this board.
Right, it's within the sheriff's department budget. We didn't need to pull from another source.
Right. Commissioner Sims?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd just like to mention that the Uptown Roxboro Group yesterday had a food truck rodeo, and I attended that, it was very successful. A lot of people come visiting our county to, for these food truck rodeos. It brings a lot of people in, and so that was very pleasant to see that. And I'd also just like to say and wish everyone a very safe and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Commissioner Palmer?
Chairman Powell and community, I was fortunate enough to be able to purchase, I ordered three quarts of stew, and I went back like two days later and asked for three more, and they were gracious enough to oblige me. If you missed that stew, you missed one of the best county, any county that I've ever had. As far as Veterans Day removed, moved to here, I didn't get that email, but I would've been here because I am a veteran. And I thank the county employees. I watch you guys, you hear me say this all the time. I watch you guys, I know how hard you work, and I personally appreciate y'all. That's my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Gentry?
I would just like to compliment our new county manager. I'm very impressed with the, the clarity of your communications, your weekly updates, the, the speed at which you've moved to get things improved has been remarkable, and I just wanna compliment you on that and thank you for that.
Commissioner Berry, here?
I just wanna echo what Commissioner, well, Chairman Powell has mentioned before. Congratulations, Commissioner Lett Thomas. Congratulations, Sheriff Lett Wilburn. I also would like to thank the people of Person County for allowing me to serve yet one more and final term, so, and, but thank you again.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Going along with the adopted agenda, we'll have a five-minute recess at this time and, and then move along with item number five. So take, take a short break.
Just wanted to kind of frame some of the current needs that we have. We do have quite a few projects that our departments have proposed for transformative and equitable uses of these funding dollars that have come from the federal government in response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. So there are a variety of ways that you can put these funds to good use. I will remind you that you do not have a deadline for allocating these funds. We have set those aside through a grant project ordinance to be used- We have set those aside through a grant project ordinance to be used in the future, whenever you decide that you would like to make those specific allocations. And I did want to put all of this on the table again for you today so that you can consider the needs that are out there, the possible projects, talk about whether you would like to allocate some of that $4.4 million that we have currently available towards any of these uses or if you would like to designate some of it in a reserve for specific purposes so that we can continue conversations around the remaining amount as we move forward. Also keep in mind, whatever you do reserve, if that is not spent for that specific purpose in the future, then it can go back into the pot for reallocation to a different purpose. So I would welcome any questions that you have about any of these projects this morning and requests that the board have some discussion as far as whether or not you would like to move forward with any of these projects or designate some of the ARP funding for any of these purposes to hold in reserve.
Manager Kathy, appreciate your explanation and clarity there. And for all those in our departments that submitted their project recommendations, I appreciate your efforts there. I know it took a lot of time and a lot of effort to come up with those recommendations and you did a good job as far as departmentally putting those together and putting those in the packet for consideration. And I think if we look at those individually, we could say that they all have merit, they all have value. And if your department heads had not submitted any requests, that would cause me more questions than I have this way. So again, appreciate that very much. But the real challenge with this board and going forward is how do we most effectively select projects that best utilize those funds here in the county? And my opinion is the goal of the board should be to apply the funds in the areas that benefit the county the most or the best going forward and have the most long-term benefits. So just a couple of thoughts. I don't know if other members would like to express or have comments related to ARP funding. Chairman Powell? Yes, sir.
All of these projects are worthy projects. However, by my assertion and opinion, we need to use this money in the most critical areas for the entire county where we deem this most, these most critical areas would be. That's my assumption.
Any other board members, comments?
Mr. Chairman, the whole point of the ARP monies was for what purpose? To buffer what we lost during a pandemic? To replace what we lost or potentially what we lost?
There were a number of purposes behind the ARP funding. Revenue replacement is one of those. As a government, we did not actually suffer the revenue losses that would have enabled us to use it for that purpose, but the provisions, the federal government ended up saying we could take a standard deduction. So in effect, all governments could claim up to $10 million of revenue replacement and use the funding for general government services, which is what we chose to do. But it's, they were also, the funding, the spirit behind the funding was to either make up for losses, it was to enhance public health preparedness moving forward. There were specific projects and infrastructure improvements such as broadband and utilities. Many governments are using it in that category and also with a focus on transformational projects that would really have an impact within our communities just in the spirit of recovery and resilience and moving forward together. So that was some of the general purposes behind the ARP.
So how, if we didn't have this money, how, and we had the same wish list of projects, how might we approach that if we didn't have this extra funding? This pile of money that just landed on us because it's a nice thing?
There are a variety of different avenues that we would pursue. Some of these would get worked into our CIP in future years and we could pursue grant funding to leverage some of our general funds for these purposes. So we might would be building funding into the general fund expenditures for these purposes and having some grant funds to supplement that. Those would be the main funding sources that we would be pursuing.
So is there, is there a way to look at which projects would move most expeditiously through the normal channels versus the ones that would take more time and effort? To kind of separate those out and put those in the normal track and then have the remaining projects that would say take longer or maybe not be as expediently or wouldn't get funding, grant funding? If we didn't, if we didn't have this money, we still want to do these things, how would we do it? What's the most, the fastest way to get the funding or to get the projects done? Next year, two years, whatever? And then, you know, try to, try to split those out and see which ones would go through the normal channels just as fast and efficiently versus those that wouldn't? And then maybe that would help us narrow down what we would fund now? Is that, am I making any sense?
You are making sense.
Okay.
I would say that that exercise may be a bit challenging. There is a sense of being able to proceed with some immediacy if we use the ARP funding. I think with any of these other projects, we are looking at a, at a longer horizon for building them into our long-term plans. You know, some of them might make it into the first year, some might make it into the second year, some might get into the third year. And determining where we could get some, some revenues to help support those projects. Certainly there's quite a bit of grant funding available out there for parks projects. So we would have to just work to, to apply for that grant, that grant funding. There's grants available to support animal services. So we might be able to get some towards those projects. The other main project is with emergency services, the Community Risk Reduction Program. There's some potential funding sources for that as well. So all of these, it would not be a matter of identifying something to fund them 100%, but we could work on incorporating them into long-term plans if they do have, you know, if the, if the board sees fit and seeking funding for those.
So if a lot of them have funding, grant funding opportunities, then we don't, we could fund part of it with the caveat that they're, that we're anticipating. I mean, you don't have to, have to fund the request 100%, do we? These are just the requests or the costs. We can say, well, we can divvy up so much money if we know that there's grant money that could be matched for that project or added to. Like when I look at Parks and Recreation, I love the splash pad idea. I think that's just a, just a really interesting and neat thing that would be beneficial. But then I look at the, the overall parks improvements and those things would have to happen going on, that would be an ongoing process anyway. So we would be doing that in the future years. It would just be nice to have it all done now, but maybe we can't do it all now. Maybe we can only find part of it and they have to finish up the rest with other grant monies or other budget monies. So is it possible to divide the money, not giving them the whole wish list, but dividing the funds up for a lesser amount?
That is possible. You could choose to allocate X amount of ARP funding towards a certain project. We can determine, you know, the scope of the project, then that funding amount plus any additional revenues that we could try to generate to supplement that, to determine if we could cover the full project as proposed or if there is something that would need to be amended with the project in order to keep it to a certain dollar amount.
Very good and I appreciate your comments there. This is, as time goes on, it's kind of an ever-changing landscape, so to speak. And I think thus far this board has approached the use of the ARP funding in a very conservative and thoughtful manner. Thoughtful related to priorities in the county such as broadband and some others that are extremely important. They were sort of easy to approve and move forward with. At the same time, we need to be cognizant of the remaining funds that are available to the county. And as you pointed out, there are no timelines here. So there's no real pressure to make a decision here. And in light of what you just said about the pending and possibility of grants related to the Parks and Rec Department, that should be considered. Of course, if there are grants available there, we certainly, certainly want to take advantage of those. Again, there's no sense of urgency here and that takes the pressure away from us as board members to make any snap, quick decisions here without a lot of due diligence and thoughtfulness as we go forward. So we, we're very flexible. At this point, we can do nothing or we could make another decision. So again, it's sort of up to the board. I've got a thought, but I'll hear from others.
Mr. Chair, I just, you know, when we look at the numbers, you know, it's, we have $4,441,121 to deal with and yet we look at what projects are going to be and you're looking at $6,505,907. So there's, obviously we don't, you know, it'd be great if you had $6 million, $7 million right now that you could say, okay, we can do it all, which we can't. I also like the suggestion and the ideas about pursuing grants. I think, you know, if we don't commit this money, we, we have this money here available and we go out and get a grant and maybe it's a matching grant, then maybe we can pull from these funds to support that matching grant. And then again, it's, instead of it costing, you know, what, $750,000, it's $350,000, right? Something like that stretches the budget and the money that we have here out. So as we said, it's not like we have to rush on this, but we certainly can pursue some of our other options so that maybe we get some of this grant money and can help some of these projects and we can pull that from this, from this fund if we need to.
And while we wait for that process, the money sits and collects interest for the county as well, which is not a bad thing.
And again, I, we're not saying, I'm not saying no to anything. Other than I'm saying, if we've got an opportunity to apply for grants, let's apply for the grants and let's see what we can get. And then let's see where we're at then. And, you know, you never, we never know what's going to, what the future's going to hold, so.
Would that throw a challenge out to the different departments? Like go out and get the grant money and we'll match it? Would that be a challenge to the team?
Well, it does. I mean, it, it does create some additional legwork as far as pulling these off, but it, and it slows the process down a bit, but it certainly provides a way for us to leverage these dollars to a greater degree. And as I said, we can work in these projects to the longer-term plans rather than trying to tackle them right off the bat.
Oh, the discussion goes on, you know, these are interesting comments and thoughts and I certainly appreciate those. And that's the objective way we should look at that. Another thing, I think we're all interested in economic development and growth moving forward. Hearing what I'm hearing and I'm, I'm going to make a motion rather than a suggestion, so a motion we can talk about. I would like to make a motion to set aside $2 million of the $2.4 million that's available in a Economic Development Catalyst Fund for a pending project. And then the remaining $2.44 there for consideration later or at a later date. So I'll just, I'll make that motion. So we're open for discussion on a motion.
I have just a question on the, is the, we mentioned earlier that let's say if we put the $2 million towards economic development, we use it, we don't use it for the year or whatever the timeframe is, it goes back into the general fund or goes back to be spent later? Is that correct or no?
What we could do is within the ARP project, we could designate $2 million as we have for broadband towards economic development. And in the event that the board decides to move forward with allocating that for a specific purpose, then we could move that into the Economic Catalyst Fund or wherever it would need to go in order to cover that expenditure.
But if it's put to the Economic Catalyst Fund, then we, it's there. It's not going anywhere, it's going to be strictly used for economic development. Just wanted to clarify that.
And this is in addition to any other incentives that we give as far as tax incentives and whatnot? So this could be significant.
Any further comments, thoughts? Here none? Have a motion on the floor? Do we need to repeat that? Okay, we're all clear? All in favor of the motion as stated? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay. Got that one recorded?
Yes, 401.
Okay. All right. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn then? Were there any other comments related to ARP? Should we leave that?
Mr. Chair's question, what we, what is our plan for the remaining ballots? To be addressed? Two point, 2.4?
To be considered at a later date?
Do we have to make a motion on that or do we just?
Don't have to.
Okay.
Here none, do we have a motion to adjourn? Somebody? In favor of adjournments, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none, motion carried. Thank you.